All right, we're going to begin. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Vernon Denoted Civil Statute, Article 625217, that the City of Smithville will conduct a council meeting and public hearing on June 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the City Hall located at 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas. I call this meeting to order. Councilman Jameson, will you lead us in invocation?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a little adaptation of the Serenity Prayer for tonight. Bow your heads. God grant us as the City Council and elected leaders of the community the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to accept the challenge of changing the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Amen.
Amen. Next item is proclamation for National Flag Day. Councilman Jenkins, please lead us.
Whereas the citizens of Smithville, Texas are extremely proud of this nation's more than 248 years of heritage and freedoms and are loyal to the ideals, traditions, and institutions which have made our nation so great, and whereas their obvious dedication to our way of life is indicative of a strong continued desire to preserve the priceless American heritage, and whereas the 14th day of June of each year is hereby designated as Flag Day and the President of the United States is authorized and requested to issue annually a proclamation calling upon officials of the government to display the flag of the United States on all government buildings on such a day and urging the people to observe the day as the anniversary of the adoption on June 14, 1977 by the Continental Congress of the Stars and Stripes as the official flag of the United States of America.
Now therefore I, Sharon Forrester, Mayor of the City of Smithville, on behalf of the Smithville City Council, do hereby proclaim the 14th day of June 2025 as Flag Day in Smithville, Texas, and urge all the citizens to show their allegiance to our country and fly the flag of the United States of America during this week. Next item is proclamation for Juneteenth. Councilman Meeks, will you lead us, please?
Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization, and whereas our nation was conceived on July 4, 1776 with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that amongst these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas at 2:00 PM on New Year's Day, January 1, 1863, using his war powers as President, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then thenceforward and forever free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery a Union war aim and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all 4 million slaves as the Union armies advanced. And whereas on June 19, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery with this announcement. The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between farmer masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. The freedmen are advised to remain at their present homes and work for wages. They are informed that they will not be allowed to collect at military posts, and they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere. And whereas the first official Juneteenth celebrations took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years.
Now therefore I, Sharon Forrester, Mayor of the City of Smithville, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth. In the City of Smithville, Bastrop County, Texas, I call this observation to the attention of all of our citizens. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Jason Ramel.
Whereas we are here today to express special recognition to Jason Ramel and to honor him for his dedication and legal expertise for 19 years serving as the City of Smithville's legal counsel. And whereas Jason Ramel graduated from St. Mary's University School of Law in 2006 and began a career at Sheets &amp; Crossfield's law firm shortly after, and was there for eight years, then opened his own practice in 2016, then in 2024 he joined the Ryan Henry Law Forum as a senior attorney. And whereas Jason Ramel's legal guidance and counsel have been invaluable in addressing complex legal matters and protecting the interests of the city. And whereas Jason Ramel helped the city to adopt an updated zoning ordinance, personnel manual, public improvement district policy, ethics policy, equal employment opportunity policy, boards and commissions handbook, and has been working on a subdivision ordinance update, to name a few of the many projects Jason has assisted the City of Smithville with. And whereas Jason Ramel's commitment to the City of Smithville and its residents is widely recognized, and his service has contributed significantly to the growth and prosperity of our community. And whereas Jason Ramel will be missed both professionally and personally, and has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service.
Now therefore I, Sharon Forrester, Mayor of the City of Smithville, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 9, 2025, as Jason Ramel Day. And the City of Smithville and urge all citizens to join me in congratulating Jason on an outstanding 19 years of service to the City of Smithville, and express my gratitude for his dedication and his commitment, and wish him much happiness as he begins his exciting new chapter in his life as a lead attorney for the New Braunfels Utilities Legal Department. See, you're gonna one day have a proclamation about you, young man.
Have him working overtime. He couldn't make tonight's meeting, but he said if we go two hours, he'll come pick it up himself.
You're gonna bake him a cake?
Yeah.
Oh, Trace Letts is kicking and sharing with all of us? We'll tell him it was good. Okay, next one's a presentation for Jimmy Jenkins on his TML certifications. I didn't know if it was a recertification. Certificate of Recertification presented by the Texas Municipal League to Jimmy Jenkins, our mayor pro temp, has successfully fulfilled the requirements for a recertification in the Certified Municipal Official Program for the year 2025 in demonstrating a continued commitment to excellence in municipal leadership and governance, awarded this 15th day of May. He has a pen, but he won't let me pin him. And he has a second one. He's like an overachiever. Wow, just stay right there. The Texas Municipal League is pleased to present the designation of Certified Municipal Official Legacy to Jimmy Jenkins for fulfilling the required continuing education unit credits through participation in the Texas Municipal League Certification Municipal Program. He always hides things, but thank you, Jimmy, for all your hard work. Next item is approval of the minutes for May 12, 2025 council meeting and public hearing and the May 21, 2025 special call council meeting and workshop. Any questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
The 21st list, Tom has been present instead of myself.
You did what?
The 21st, Tom has listed as president instead of myself.
Did you get that, Jennifer? Okay. If you want to make a motion, they're just... She's making note of it.
Mayor, you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I move approval of the minutes from the May 12, 2025 council meeting and public hearing and the May 21, 2025 special call council meeting and workshop as amended by Counselor Dunham's comment. I didn't know what he said, so... What was the amendment?
Tom Etheridge was marked as president on the 21st instead of myself.
Noting the change of Tom Etheridge's presence or not being present. And therein lies the motion.
A second.
Motion has been made in the second. All in favor? One, two. It is approved. Next portion is general public comment. Who do we have signed up to speak?
First I have John Schindler.
Welcome. Will you please just state your name and where you live, please?
You had my back.
You're kinda tall, so you may have...
Y'all keep forgetting that all the time.
I'm sorry. We're gonna make a note of that. Okay, make a note. Well, you may have to pick the mic up so everybody can...
Mic up.
There, now I can hear you.
All right.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Three minutes. God hardly knows what to do with all the time. Been a while since I've been here, and I see that we have the youthful council members over there on the left. We have our mayor and the age-related illnesses over here on the right, which I can probably better identify with. So I could talk for about three hours. Won't do that. Many, some years ago, when I was in Smithville, I was talking to administration person, and we talked about the south side of the tracks. Talked about how there was a lot of people were there whose property values went up a lot. And I mentioned the word gentrification. He said, "Man, we can't use that word." I don't know why not, but we did. And now look at where we're at today. Three and a half years ago, my wife wanted to move to Smithville because we have our children here and our grandchildren. So I found a piece of property north of Colorado Drive, and we started building a house. My wife and I built this house for three and a half years. And our property taxes are getting to be really high, and I don't intend to be gentrified out of my house. So I asked you guys to give me a call today, and Jimmy, you did. I didn't expect everybody to. But sometime in the near future, I'd like for y'all to give me a call. For 18 years, I've studied property taxes. I know the law. I know the court cases. I know a hell of a lot about property taxes. They are legal, but folks, they're not lawful. They're not lawful for a lot of us. And I'd like to explain this here to you because I've got an idea on what to do with this. It's never been tried before, I don't think, in the entire country, but it just might work. And I'd like to explain a little bit about the law. I'd like to answer any of your questions, and I'd like to explain what my twist is. So if y'all would give me a call sometime in the next week or so and give me some time to sit down and talk with y'all, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schindler. Tracy wants to finish out your 40 seconds, I think.
Next I have Kristin Meriwether.
Welcome. Please state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I'm not as tall. Kristin Meriwether, Smithville, Texas News. You guys didn't think I was gonna miss budget season, did you? We're... I'm kind of back, half back, sort of back. I've appreciated all the texts and calls and emails over the last month. I know it's been really disappointing not to get Smithville, Texas News. It has been incredibly disappointing to not be able to give that to you guys every week. I've certainly missed it. So I wanted to provide a little mini update. I have been working diligently behind the scenes to get a restructured business model up, and we're gonna make three changes that I'm hoping everybody likes. Number one, we're getting a website. I know everybody wanted... complained about us not having a website so it'd allow us to share articles and host our content on a place that everybody can find. We're gonna do an audio version of the Smithville Minute. And so I have a little... We're everyone hosts that on Spotify. I've got a little sample that I'm showing to some business meetings or some business places tomorrow, and I'm hoping to share it online very soon. The other thing is gonna be video. So normally when I come to these meetings, I write like a little summary. I'm actually gonna do a video for this tonight, so I'm hoping you guys can give me some feedback on that. And so, yeah, I think... Thank you, guys, for all your patience as I've gone through this restructuring. I think this is probably one of the most humiliating things I've had to go through as a human being, just like a total failure in public. So I do appreciate all the support that we've had so far, and I look forward to continuing to report on the council and what you guys are doing going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item is presentation, public meeting number two. Is Jerry here? Okay, very good, because it...
I'm Tim Jenkins. I'm chief planner at Langford.
I appreciate you being here. General Land Office, GLO, GDGB, MIT, Reso...
RCP.
What?
It's complia. It's complia.
Oh, sorry.
You jump one.
I always jump one. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump you.
That's all right. What we're here to talk about tonight is we're at the 50% mark on the comprehensive plan, and that's under review currently by stakeholder group and council and P&amp;Z, I think. But this is the portal that we've built for you to engage now where we don't have to trade emails or phone calls or anything. We can capture all the input in this portal. And we can go through it if you want, quick. So along with... Okay, that's good. So along with the draft plan that's in, it's in a PDF format where you can review the whole document, there's portions that are broken out, and these areas are places where you can click and go look at specific parts of the plan or specific topics. Moustache. No, okay, thank you. So when we open this up to the public, they'll be able to also go in and comment on the interactive map, which is lower. And each of those are a chapter of the document. So we've got each... We're a little more than 50% done, but what we'll do is after we get your input back and the staffs, we're gonna integrate all that and come out with a second version that will be used for the public to review and also for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this will be the tool for general public as well. It's just we haven't opened it up yet until we get you... Until we get you, we get all the feedback from the core team, uh, core planning team. Some of the other things that are going on is that we also have a special study. That's in the budget and you can. We've recommended downtown fusion plan, like I call it. Or a specific area plan or a functional plan, like sidewalks or something like that. I think I will take that candy.
While he's getting hydrated, yes, this, this is a nice one stop shop for everything that is comp plan. For those of who have been through a couple, two or three of these, a lot of paper. So this is a, one spot where you can go find any and everything about the comp plan. It is under internal review with the council, the planning and zoning and the stakeholders. I think that review deadline is, is before the end of the month. So we can get this out to the community where we get the rest of the input needed to help finalize the plan. And you, you're going over the schedule here in a moment, correct? Okay, perfect.
So. After we get your input back and we do version two. Which will include anything that we've been working on since then, which we'll let you know about. And also integrating any changes and edits that you guys give us. After that, we want to. Take that to the planning and zoning commission. And present it for acceptance, pretty much, it doesn't have to be an official act, but what we want. Because we have to turn it into GLO for their review. So we're required to do a 50% review. With GLO and draft goals and objectives. So that's what you'll get in the version two that will go out to the public for, for review. After the P and Z's reviewed it and we've gotten the okay from GLO. We'll start the final phase of writing the final plan. And that will include a strategic implementation strategy. Department of redundancy there. But it'll. It'll be an implementation strategy that goes with the capital improvement plan. And we kind of, we view that to make that your. Action plan, you can pull those two sections out. They'll work with. You'll have the goals, objectives and actions tied to the projects that we've identified in the capital improvement plan. The CIP will be. Will phase it to a short term. Projects, which be zero to five years, intermediate, five to 15 and long term. 15 to 20 or beyond, so long range transportation project or something like that. We have identified in the land use, some unique features for Smithville. Hope, we hope y'all like it, we really want you to look hard at it. What we've done is create two mixed use districts. One is centered on 7195 intersection in the airport. As a new, new commercial industrial node. And then the, the historic district, which we're also calling mixed use, but it's a whole different version. So we're in the final version, we'll. You know, zoom down and study those areas a little more and come up with some more goals and objectives to recommend to you about. One, also keeping them connected so that you don't get more division in the city or separation from activities. So that's the. Oh, also, we're, we're having a review of your governance documents, which are the zoning ordinance, subdivision. Building codes. And any other ordinance or that you may have passed like floodplain management. And if not, we'll have samples of those for you. As, and we'll make recommendations in the implementation strategy that you. You might, i- if you choose, you, these will be examples of. Best practices in windstorm possibly, but might be an ordinance you want to. After P and Z and final, we'll bring it back to, back through the process. With the final plan, P and Z and bring it to you for final approval. Trying to, we want to do that before the end of the year. And we're gonna commit to doing that. I've, I've just hired three more people, so it isn't Tim writing the plan anymore. I'll write, also I'll write the best part. But we're excited, I'm, we're looking forward to coming and doing a little more down in the weeds, planning with you on the special study.
We are currently in the process of updating to the 2021 International Building Code from 2006. Yeah, so we're about two to three months out from adopting that.
That's perfect resiliency.
Yes, sir.
Tim, where, where in your schedule or timing on the calendar are you addressing the land use plan and the capital improvement plans?
Well, we, we've, we've got the 50%, we'll be bringing to P and Z. Probably mid-July. Or probably the first one in July. And then bringing back to you, so that'll give it, that'll be at least a month that it's been out in the public for review using our portal.
Yeah, that's gonna be the August planning and zoning meeting.
Oh, okay.
Want to give it a longer time for the community and council to look at the.
It would be further along then.
Are you aware on the agenda tonight, we'll be addressing, developing an ad hoc committee for the purpose of evaluating impact fees. We need to take a look, an early look at land use plan and capital improvement, so.
Yes, I was aware of that and we, I've worked on impact fees and we can support the information and data that they may need. And, and any mapping. So we're more than happy to work with your consultant.
Tim, do you, are you getting much public comment or public input through the portal?
Not yet, because right now we're just using.
For internal.
Yeah, we're having stakeholders.
But there will be a public segment at the end, you, you just said that, right?
Yeah, because for, at least, you know, for P and Z, we'll have to do it two weeks prior. But you've got that two weeks. And then for you, it's gotta be two weeks prior. So that's a full month that they'll be looking at the same land use plan. We'll, we'll put down pencils and stop work and bring it through your processes and let the public. Look at it and if, if there's any other activities you guys want us to do, we'll, we'll plan to do that and. You know, get, get it out as much as we can, we, we want transparency and we really feel that once this is available to everybody that. You'll feel like you own the plan and that's really what we're after, it is your plan and. We want to make sure we reflect your values and, and goals and your, your vision.
Jill, did you want to add anything? I know you've worked a lot on this also, are you, you're welcome to enlighten us if you. I know you have a lot of knowledge and I know you've worked a lot. Yes.
She is a great partner and we. We've worked out around a lot of obstacles and.
Yes, you have.
And we've, we've, we stayed, stayed the course, so real proud of Jill.
Yes, and so.
I, I just wanted to mention, we've had several community forums already that have provided input from the community into the planning process. We've got one more on the books for the end of July. I, sorry, I wasn't prepared to tell you, I'm not positive that we have it nailed down, but the idea is that we'll have another community forum at the end of July. And I think there may be one last one that we might have between now and the time that everything is finalized. And, and we need to talk about an open house that we're planning, so.
I like it.
Yes, yeah, 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 so, so we're real excited about how much the public is, we're welcoming, inviting, we're trying to get as much public feedback as possible. And all of the public forums that we've had to date are online at our website, on the city's website. And so those, those, if anybody would like to watch the public forums, that generally we have a panel of experts that can explain. Some, some things about the specific topic and then there's a lot of community back and forth. Just discussion and so forth on the, on the, the topic at hand, so. Any, any feedback from the community, it doesn't end there, just if, if you have ideas or information you'd like to share or anything, we're, you know, we're still gathering all that information. And this portal will be really great to, to help to, to do that, but anybody not comfortable to go on the portal can certainly come and talk to me or anyone else on staff. That, and certainly any of you, I'm sure you'll be getting questions and ideas from the public, so. We really appreciate all the support from the city council and it's, 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 it's looking.
Coming together.
It's coming together, yeah, yeah, thank you.
How's the attendance been, starting to pick up, are we still getting small crowds?
Because you have more experience from a wide.
Oh, oh. Oh, it's. Usually we need 25 people, I think. This has been filled up on a few of the forums and had some really interesting dialogue going. That, that wasn't intended, you know, we had the airport manager here when we were doing community facilities. And he and the medical guys started talking about workforce and bringing up some really interesting issues and. We've got everything on transcripts and they'll be in a pit, they'll be, the forum transcripts will be appendices in the plan. And we've integrated anything that we discovered in the forums in, into the document, so. It's been, it's not two separate activities, it's, it's been coordinated, believe it or not. May not look like it, but it was, so.
Well, it's enlightening people and I think that's important.
And I do think we need to make sure that we are including the airport as the, the jewel that it is, because there's not another one in the county. I've been talking with Dory Kelly from Bastrop about uses that, that could be multi-county uses for the thing, so I want to make sure that we include that. As a center point for things and a hub for things that can happen.
Yeah, we've, we've centered that. The multiple use. Node based on the airport as the heart of it, even though we have the commercial intersection. Sorry, I talk with my hands a lot.
So do I.
This is Jenkins' trait. But yeah, we, we are looking at the surrounding uses. And wanting to really make that a special district and, and. Drill down on it and analyze it. Along with that, we're also looking at the corridor, 95 corridor. So all of that kind of is starting to push toward a, a special study in itself, but. To me, what I'm seeing is that these, that these two. Energy centers of your commercial activity, the new out on the highway and then the, the old in the historic. And the connection between that we really want to create ways, you know, trails, things like that, that can connect. Both, both areas of the city so that it doesn't feel like a, a bypass, like you see in a lot of small cities where. A loop's been built and all the business went out to the loop and left downtown. We want them to complement one another.
I know Kathy Meek has been working very hard to get the big highway signs so people know how far things are off and on the highway. I think you're making some movement, aren't you, on that, are you not?
Yeah, we have. Tiger Den is going to be our first logo on the highway sign, which we're very excited about that. The text dot is measuring whatever they do when they get out there, but to determine the best. Our options for the location of the sign and once we get Tiger Den on there, hopefully we can bring some of the other qualifying businesses. Because there's very few that qualify, but, but Dairy Queen, you have to be open like. Almost seven days a week and blah, 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 there's other stuff, but. We're, we're happy because if we can get the sign up, then I believe the other businesses will follow.
Agree.
We've got regional workforce, regional airport, regional healthcare. Got a lot of synergism that can be brought together that we can sell.
Society. Well, thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Jill.
I've worked with.
Anybody have an answer question, Joe? Anything you want to add, anybody? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Next item is discussion and action on the amendment to be interlock, interlocal agreement with Bastrop County. To add the Smithville Independent School District for a stormwater drainage project funded by the Texas General Land Office. Through the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Method of Distribution, Distribution Program.
Alright, Councilman Mayor, this is something, it's been two and a half years in the works. We did do a interlocal agreement with Bastrop County last year in July. This is for the project that helps the school drainage in the area off of Webster and Harper, you can see the exhibit here. The Smithville Independent School District wanted to be added as a partner with this ILA. It may have or is going to go to the Bastrop County Commissioners Court. The ILA establishes basic groundwork as a partner for land use, maintenance of the facilities. The boundary of the, of the project is shown on, in the exhibit. And we're going to need some temporary construction access easements that will go away once the project is complete. Maintenance of the improvements will be the responsibility of the school. And again, approving this amended ILA just adds the Smith Independent School District as a partner to this project. Which is totaling $3.4 million. And on Wednesday, we're receiving a check from CapCog for our portion, which is about 2.4 million.
It's gonna be a big check.
Does this only affect this particular portion of the entire grant?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Does this only affect this particular portion of the entire grant of this one particular project?
Yes, it's, it's one project for $3.4 million to improve drainage in that particular area, Jones Street, Webster, Harper and the school. No match, by the way, this is 3.4 million, some millions that are coming to us for free.
In that case, would you like a motion?
Come on Mitch.
I move approval of the amendment to an interlocal agreement with Bastrop County to add the Smithville Independent School District for Stormwater Drainage Project. Funded by the Texas General Land Office through the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Discussion and action on entering into a contract with Singleton, Clark and Company, PC for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year audit.
Alright, Councilman Mayor, we've used Singleton and Clark for quite some time, at least the past six, seven years. Their contract is up for renewal, they're asking for a 4% increase over what we paid last year, which was $31,900. They're requesting 32,900, that does include the basic audit plus that required for single audit. Which is triggered when you spend more than 750,000 in a given year upon receipt of grant funding. So we have to do a single audit and have been for the last four or five years. Yeah. So I'm, I'm requesting your approval for this contract.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I got one question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Councilman Jenkins, before you move, or you can move and we can still ask the question. Just curious, what is the selection process for this, do we solicit other proposals?
We have in the past, but this year, given the ERP system implementation and budget coming up. I didn't recommend going out for, for bid again.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we enter into a contract with Singleton, Clark and Company, PC for the 24, 25 fiscal year audit.
I second that emotion.
A motion has been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Discussion and action on an ordinance appointing the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve as the Impact B's Advisory Committee.
Alright, Mayor and Council, if you recall from the last meeting we had in, in May, this is a carryover action. Whereby we were going to appoint the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve as the Impact Fee Advisory Board. A couple of things have come to light. And you do have the, the ordinance in front of you that Ryan Henry's firm prepared, so if there's any questions that I can't answer, be happy to have Ryan or his team answer. The. Ordinance requires or the law requires that you have someone from the ETJ serve as an ad hoc member of. The planning of the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The nature and function of the planning and zoning requires that you are a citizen living inside the city limits. So we're going to have to appoint an ad hoc member from the ETJ. And as luck or unluck would have it, Mr. Garrett Gutierrez feels there's a conflict of interest of him serving in that capacity. So he is going to be not serving in that capacity. So we need to make a motion in that we put someone from the ETJ to serve as the ad hoc position on this committee. An individual has come forth and actually agreed to to support this, if you agree to it. Mr. Sanford Myerson, who lives in the ETJ. And part of the requirements of serving on an impact fee advisory committee, you have to be in real estate development or construction. And he meets the two of the three of those. And I would like you to consider his appointment to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee to fill the spot that Garrett is not going to fill.
Can you clarify what spot Garrett is not going to fill?
He he is the planning and zoning chairman and he on this particular committee. He feels there's a conflict of interest as he works for Bluebonnet Electric. And we're talking about impact fees with those utilities. He has requested not to serve in that capacity. And I've spoken to our legal counsel and said that's that's acceptable. You just have to make that in a motion tonight.
Well, and. Following up on on what you're talking about, the need to appoint an ad hoc member. Part of what we discussed last month when this came out is that we reserve the right to. Appoint additional ad hoc members from the community to serve as subject matter experts. So possibly we could roll what you're talking about, an ETJ representative. Into asking citizens who would be interested in applying to help provide subject matter expertise. To support the planning and zoning project. And let's see what applicants we get over the next few weeks and then choose from those.
Well, the the thing is that they cannot be a citizen because they're an ETJ. So no one from the city of Smithville can apply to serve in the ETJ position.
But I'm talking about adding two or three more positions that would be citizens serving in the capacity of. Of subject matter experts.
I'll defer to to council about how many people is are typically serving on an impact. The advisory committee.
You're usually just about five or seven is all you're gonna have. When you start packing it in, you it can grow outside of your control, basically.
So we would have four from P and Z, add one from ETJ, and we could add two more. From the citizens ad hoc, subject matter experts to keep it at seven.
We would need to change the ordinance. If you're talking about ad hoc. If there's subject matter experts, those can provide subject matter, you know, at any time. Are you talking about them actually voting? On the committee?
I'd like to see them vote. I'm amenable to saying that they're just advisory. Tell me what the logistics might be there.
But if we're looking at. Five. Is going to be your regular group. I believe the statute basically says it has to have. A particular set with particular qualifications. And so you're adding more numbers to them. I need to double check if they need to be advisory or they need to be or they can be voting members. That's the part I'm not sure about.
Well, what are the qualities that each P and Z member would need to have to qualify to serve on the impact fee committee? Just the fact that they're on P and Z qualifies them?
No. So the the your P and Z already kind of has the the ones that are there now already kind of have the qualifications that are necessary. You have to have a certain, you need at least one from the real estate. Arena or the the building construction arena.
Developer.
Yeah, and so and then. If you're if you're in the ETJ, you have to have some member from the ETJ. And they can that you can have the same person have both qualifications. And then the rest are are. Just, you know, regular members that you appoint from the community a whole. Does it make sense or did I miss?
All right, I'm kind of thinking through the members of the P and Z and see which of them meet those requirements.
They're already serving on planning and zoning.
What I asked is serving on P and Z make you qualified to be on an impact fees advisor?
Serving on P and Z all by itself doesn't automatically make you qualified to serve on the impact fee.
Does not.
Does not by itself, but looking at who you have there already, they have the qualifications.
You've got Mr. Philip Slaughter, who's a real estate attorney. So that meets the real estate. Andy with Sandy Myers and you meet the construction.
And not only that, to me, we are looking at a group of people that have been. Sorry, that have been handling planning and zoning ordinances, new new new. Construction, new infrastructure that's going to be coming in and out. They are already familiar with all of the aspects of what's going on. To me, I'm very, very comfortable with a five person group. I think they work well together. I think Sandy, who is a and lives in the ETJ, but he is, you know, in in charge of the airport as the airport manager. The Smithville is just, we are really grateful to have him. And him serving on this committee would be a really good thing for us because of his experience and his commitment to Smithville.
I guess. Just question, we're understanding who's on P and Z currently. How does this impact future decisions regarding P and Z? If Garrett decides he is going to step down from P and Z, does that fifth member automatically become a member of this committee? Is it just the four members of the P and Z? And then there's this perpetual fifth member that is determined, how does this impact future decisions?
Okay, Mr. Gutierrez has agreed to serve out his remaining term as on the planning and zoning. But as I stated, he has a conflict of interest and does not want to serve in the capacity of on the impact advisory committee. So having said that, when the Planning and Zoning Commission meets in the impact advisory committee capacity. Mr. Stanford Myerson would come on and it would step in and and take Garrett's Garrett's role.
But he would be representing the ETJ.
Correct.
So we would have room for at least one more appointment then for an ad hoc citizen.
Planning and zoning work well together, so I think let's leave them together because they've researched the ordinances and everything. So, you know, I think the planning and zoning minus Garrett adding Sandy is a good fit.
I guess I'm just. More particular on the wording rather than the who's who and just making sure we're we're good. But it. Item C is specifically mentioning the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Item C, it it's a permissive listing, right? So technically what this ordinance is, this is not the ordinance that says these are the people appointed. This is an ordinance that allows you to create and it creates the committee itself, the Impact Fee Committee. And it gives the criteria for serving on that committee. And so it allows you to simply say, as long as they're qualified, P and Z can also be that committee. But you have to kind of pass the ordinance first. And you, at the same time, you can appoint people to it right now, or you can come back with individual names. But it's designed so that you have the or the law requires an ordinance that creates the Impact Fee Committee. And so that's what this thing does. All right, now you can, as I said, you can do it in one big swoop, which is kind of what we were originally intending. You pass the ordinance and say who goes on it at the same time.
I'm I'm really good, as I say, with the P and Z doing this. If if they do need outside expertise, they can always ask and and find someone within the community to come in and talk to them. And give them whatever expertise they have and not have to have them on the committee. I I think the five member committee is a good size for the committee to be able to work well together, to move fast. To get the impact fees implemented in a reasonable timeframe for us to forward it. That is the one thing I want is I want to make sure that we do move forward with it. Not with great haste, but with enough movement so that we get this done before the end of the year.
I would be in favor of adding at least one ad hoc member from the community through applications to assist.
I do have one other question.
Go ahead.
Well, we're we're adding a person for ETJ, which basically replaces Garrett. Not participating because of a conflict of interest. And then we would add one more person from the community based on applications we might receive from those who were interested.
You have you you have a percentage issue you have to. I apologize, can't quite do that in my head. When you add people to it, it decreases and dilutes the percentage. So the percentage from each area, from the two areas have to be 40%. And so when you add people to it, it decreases the percentage that they qualify for.
Well, let's walk through that, what what 40%? I mean, you're starting out with five.
Yeah, you're starting out with five, and you have two of five, which is basically going to be, like I said, I can't do math in my head. But it's basically.
That's 40%.
40% right there. So you add one more, then you're you're lower than 40%.
So you have to have three at that point.
Yeah, you have to have three that qualify for both those cut those categories.
Three that qualify for what?
The the real estate or the construction industry, the the qualification matters that has to be on present on the.
Okay, can you point me to that?
So if you're looking at like the statute or you want the ordinance?
Say it again.
So the state statute says not less than 40% of the membership of the advisory committee must be representatives of the real estate, development. Or or building industries who are not employees or officials of the political subdivision.
Okay, say the real estate and what?
So it's.
Real estate, development.
Then or building industry.
Building.
Real estate. Okay, development or building industries.
Or?
Or.
So there's two things.
Okay, real estate is one.
Right.
Development, it just says development.
Right.
And the third one is building industry.
Okay, so there are three. And so you have to have 40% representing each one?
No, all of them collected must be 40%. So like right now, if you have five, two of them together are 40%. And so you're good. If you have six.
Three things that you have to represent.
So no, it's it's an or. It's real estate or development or building industry.
One person can represent two things. Okay, it doesn't mean that each you have to have one from each one, you have to have people qualified for it.
So wouldn't you rather have more than one person representing? If one person represents two things, then you're diluting the expertise that would be available if you had one person representing each.
Well, I'm gonna have to say that I would believe that the P and Z people have been doing development and and co and everything else since they've been on there. They're already experts at that. So I don't believe that there there has to be anyone else to represent that part.
So in effect, you're saying you would be opposed to adding an ad hoc member from the community?
That is correct.
I'm asking my colleagues, is there anyone else interested in adding another, a sixth member, an ad hoc member from the community?
One thing that I question on this specifically is a list that the residents have, there the the members must be residents. And then we're also at the same time. Coming and saying that one of them needs to be from the ETJ, which is outside the city. And so I'm wondering about that contradiction.
I in in part D, it says right here, the impact fee is to be applied, if the impact fee is to be implied. In the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, the membership of the committee must include a representative from that area.
Which seems to contradict point A.
Uh, it make, I don't think it contradicts it, I think it adds a caveat.
Yeah, it's like you 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 have a a general statement, then you have an exception, right? And so the the way it's set up, it's the committee isn't limited to ETJ. The statute, it's it's if you're gonna do it anywhere in the city or in the ETJ. And so it basically says you, as a general statement, you got to be a citizen. But if you're going into the ETJ, then you have to have at least one of those has to, doesn't can't be a citizen, has to be an ETJ member.
Okay.
That would override.
Yes, that's exactly right. That's a good word to use, it overrides.
Okay, perfect. And I mean, as far as Mitch's comment, I mean, I personally don't see the harm. I mean, I I do agree with Ms. Councilman Jamison here that, or not Jamison, I'm sorry. Getting the last name.
There's a big difference.
I I.
I'm into that one.
I do agree that P and Z, I mean, everyone that I've, every meeting that I've experienced, they do seem well versed in the ordinances. They do have quite a lot of experience specifically with our town. But I also am of the opinion that. Why not one more that just is able to speak that isn't elected? And I I don't see any harm in in that extra person.
That so question of the logistics here, if we didn't have the situation with Garrett Gutierrez and a conflict of interest. And we had been adding the ETJ position, then we would have had six, correct?
No, you would, the the way this ordinance is arranged, you have five. But if someone you have to have someone from the ETJ, then one of the members of the P and Z wouldn't be able to serve. You have to put someone from the ETJ there.
So you would have had to have replaced one.
Yeah, you would have to replace one.
So we're just getting lucky here.
Uh, yeah, actually.
I I personally think that the group, including Sandy, would really be sufficient. I mean, not that it hurts to have another one on there, Mitch, but I don't know committees, just in my experience over my career. It seems like the bigger they get, they get a little bit, you know, unwieldy sometimes. And I I think that's those experts really would be do an excellent job on this committee.
I would venture to also say that all of these meetings are going to be open to the public. So you you can have community input as we go through the process.
You want to give me a motion?
Reading the tea leaves, I will not make a motion for any action.
Will somebody make me a motion?
I'll make your motion right now. I I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2025-687. With the addition of Sandy Myerson as the ETJ representative? Or do they have to be separate, Robert?
You you would move to adopt the ordinance and appoint the current P and Z except, and then you switch the names with Sandy instead of.
Okay, I will remake the motion then. I move that we approve the ordinance number 2025-687. And adopt the P and Z committee as the Impact Fee Counsel. And that on that P and Z, we stepping down Mr. Gutierrez and stepping Sandy Myerson in place as the ETJ representative.
I'll second that emotion.
Motion's been made in, a motion has been made in second, all in favor. Opposed?
For the purpose of representing in the record that I wanted additional person added, I will vote no.
Did you get that, Jennifer? Thank you.
You're on 11.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action on the upcoming budget plan process and proposed schedule of related meetings and workshops. Councilman Jamison, will you lead us?
Pardon me for just a moment.
I did publish the schedule in the latest city manager update and it hasn't changed except one time error that. Councilmember Dunham found, thank you. It's also a detailed schedules behind you. And that first meeting is going to be June 18th, Wednesday, June 18th at 5:00 PM here at City Hall.
So to explain why I brought this back up, although the the motion failed in last month's meeting. Failed three to two. I've had a lot of people in the community and others ask me more about what the intent and purpose was. And I just wanted to be clear, this isn't trying to force. A budget that would include a decrease in spending. It, the intent is to go through the process of what would a budget look like if we were to cut spending? Now, the last month's motion was with three different scenarios, one being requiring a 3% cut in spending. And finding or reallocating money to fund economic development with $150,000. With an acknowledging that the. with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, within acknowledging that the reality of the only revenue stream that we can really impact going forward based on, uh, bills in the legislature is increasing our sales tax revenue. We have seen the preliminary estimates for the valuations, uh, for Smithville coming in, and it looks like at best, we're going to have a slight increase in revenue from property taxes, although we're gonna have another, I think it was, forgive the numbers, oh, just over a hundred thousand dollars that we're going to lose again this year because of additional people aged sixty-five and over obtaining their exemption. And then if the current state budget passes next year, and the twenty-six budget, we're going to see that amount double. So if we lost a hundred and nineteen in revenue last year, and we're gonna lose another small one hundred something this year, and then that number's gonna double the next year. We've got another hundred thousand dollar shortfall this year. Last year's shortfall, we addressed with the minimal property tax rate increase that we did pass. I don't know how we're going to fund this loss in revenue, nor how we will fund the additional loss in revenue two years from now. So what I am proposing is that we have alternative budget scenarios prepared now, hopefully going into the June eighteenth workshop, so that we can take a look at what it would look like if we were to cut spending three percent. I'm not saying that we will, I'm saying what would we have to do? And it requires an evaluation and discussions with the department heads. I think it goes beyond sitting with the department heads and saying, what are your needs? It goes beyond to the point that you say, what savings can you create? What efficiencies are in your department? Are there opportunities to change responsibilities or merge departments? So I'm, I'm asking for more in-depth discussion that would give us alternative budget scenarios to consider based on what our actual revenue projections come in at. So I'm, I'm either, uh, I've had to have some con, conversations with my colleagues and other citizens to see now what my colleagues feel about this.
Well, what I have observed this as, you know, I just went through a very ugly election cycle. And I've talked to almost everyone block by block. I cannot tell you how many people came up to me and said, you know, one of the things that is bothering me more than anything is we want people to come and live in this town, but nobody wants to come to a town where the streets aren't maintained, where the city services that you have are not provided at an acceptable level. I've had, I had more people than I can tell you come up and say, you know, uh, what cuts you did last time was twenty dollars a month for us. Okay, we know that some people can't pay that, but the most of the people in this city would be willing to accept that twenty dollars more to keep their services, to have their streets fixed, and to make sure that the city looks like it should. So when people come here and want to move here, they see a city that, yes, this is what we want, and this is where we wanna be. I can't tell you, I drive down the streets, and sometimes it looks like, okay, I'm gonna have to dodge this, dodge this, or I have to stop because we can't fix the potholes and stuff because we don't have the money. I am, uh, I'm all in, and, and, in every effort to save every dime that we can and move forward as a city and, and make the necessary adjustments that we need to make to save money. But I'm also wanting to make sure that we provide the services and the things that are necessary to move forward so that we can provide every service that we are committed to serving this community.
Uh, Robert, on that street plan, I had asked you about the street plan, and I had forgotten. I had seen it a year ago, so you might have to give it to me again. But, um, how, uh, would we be able to do a different tax note? Or other than budgetary, uh, uh, possible, you know, monies from, from, we allocate from the budget? What other ways could we fund this street plan?
Well, first, we need to figure out how much money we're dealing with, and that's a function of giving the preliminary, I'm sorry, the certified values. Once you have that, you can pretty much set everything else, uh, into motion and prioritize what you want. The street assessment was done, um, last year, I think March of twenty twenty-four, and we, we've done this a couple of years in the past, and the, the group comes in and, and, and drives your whole town, and they rate your streets from one to five. We target the fours and fives, which are the streets that need, you know, most attention. And you develop a budget to that. Edward has been, in the past, with the exception of last year, we always do major street paving in partnership with the county to address some of these roads that are fours and fives. But since the budget was cut last year, that didn't happen. So we're looking to put that back into the budget this year and prioritize the streets, you know, from the street assessment we paid for and get them fixed in that manner. Now, that's probably gonna take, depending on how many streets you want to do, a significant amount of money, like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand as the, as Edward, he's going up. So yeah, a decision has to be made, um, as to, uh, uh, you can cut, 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 but the house is falling down around you. So we really need to focus and prioritize, you know, what streets, what facilities, what we wanna maintain.
Could we, could we, uh, do this in a phased project where we, we prioritize certain streets for this coming budget and then, and then for the following year?
We've done, that's how we, actually how we do that. We identify these, the streets we want to do, and depending upon the budget, we even give a schedule as to when they're going to be done, weather permitting. And it typically takes three to four months to get through this list of streets that we want to repave or redo. That doesn't mean we don't continue to do potholes and, and fixes in the interim, but it greatly inhibits our ability to do a mass upgrade like we have in the past, when you don't have the funding to do so.
Okay, so like just regular maintenance, like filling a pothole is out of what?
Yeah, we got that.
That, that's, that's not what we're talking about here?
No, he's got that, uh, uh, Edward has that covered, and his, his teams are still doing pothole repair. Uh, citizens, UC Click Fix, and, and, uh, we turn those around pretty quick. Well, we can't be everywhere, so if you're out there and you, you know, take a picture of a pothole, get it to us, we'll get it fixed.
I, I mean, also, I was obviously in the election this past year, and I, there are a lot of people that, that very much want to maintain their services. They want to, they, they enjoy the amount of services that are, are present in the city. I am also one of those people. But there's also a very large portion of this community that is struggling. They are living paycheck to paycheck, and it is an extreme burden, and it's pushing a significant amount of population out, in my opinion. Additionally, I think that's based on, on the preliminary numbers that you shared in your report, there's a decrease in residential value that you're seeing, and you're, you've been seeing that in the city of Austin for the past couple of years, the, the city proper. Um, and it is now seemingly moving out into the, the suburbs and, and the exurbs like us. And they're now having to go through the city of Austin. It's hitting all the headlines. I mean, the biggest controversy was the night swims at, at Barton Creek, uh, uh, Barton Springs, where the city was trying to figure out how they could cut that, and, and it's been saved. But every, every single department is having to come with a, a point and a half percent reduction in their expenditures, and, and they're having to increase that next year in preparation of the, the over sixty-five being increased. And I, I feel like this area's been blessed for a long time. I mean, Austin was considered to be the city the recession forgot in two thousand and eight. And I just, I, I am personally curious if looking at Austin, if that's a cautionary tale of what we're about to experience, especially the preliminary numbers coming in, with basically no increase over last year at all. I mean, it's less than a percent from what I understand. So how do we navigate this, knowing that the property values aren't going up? Knowing that we have a lot to do when it comes to, to the roads, to the wastewater plant that's coming up, all these big expenditures? Rather than, than potentially focusing on, on, uh, top line budget cut, maybe working with the, the, the staff to figure out where efficiencies can be gained, to stretch the dollar further, and, and to figure out how can we get more out of it so we can get it for two fifty instead of three fifty? Which Edward won't like, but just finding ways to, to be more creative in those, those, and, and just tightening everything up right now. I mean, there's, I, we run lean.
Yeah, I understand, appreciate that citizens are having a hard time, but the people provide the services that you, you love so much are also hurting our employees.
Absolutely, and I, I know I was talking with the, the, the police.
They're not immune from all the.
Oh, no. I mean, absolutely, and, and I'm not talking about salaries at this point. I'm just saying, if we're, we're wanting to, I, I know every year, everybody wants a raise, but I mean, we've gotta be able to do that while also getting the infrastructure. And, and, I mean, I was talking with one of the police officers, and he said, I believe it was roughly eight dollars got added to his check with the last cola. And so, I mean, that's nothing, but at the same time, how are we doing this?
Yeah, and another thing is, you know, you talk about, um, people that are unable to pay their bills. There are a lot of things happening behind the scene. We, we have this H and H project that's going to start looking for health and housing together, for affordable housing. That was a great move. Janice, thank you, I know you were instrumental in that. We also have St. David's that's, that's trying to work to, uh, start helping to pay electric bills and things like that. I know that Charlene does that on a part-time basis, but I know there's an effort to get a grant to move them in so that we do things like that. We're gonna have to partner with agencies that can help the people pay their electric and pay their bills like that. And if they have the way to do that, it, it won't be such a burden with, with what we have to do with the other. We have to find a path forward for everyone. I do agree with you on that. But, you know, if, one thing that bothers me is, I remember talking to, uh, Chief Rebka in twenty twenty-three. He couldn't fill the three police spots because we were not even close to being paying a, a, a pay that other cities are doing. So we have to also look at, okay, are we putting ourselves where our people that we've trained and everything else are gonna go, and we're gonna leave? We, 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 we walk a really fine line here about how we're gonna do this.
Yeah, I completely agree. Uh, and I mean, I've also heard many, many times over that a lot of the employees in the city can't even afford to live in the city because it, it costs too much to live here. And so it's, it's really chicken and an egg. How do we pay them more to where they can live in the community they service? But also get the funding to be able to pay them more without taxing them to the point where they can't live here more?
One thing is we have to have more, more rooftops, and we have to have, uh, some.
Mike.
Special properties.
Use your mic.
We're gonna have.
Use your mic.
Sorry, sorry about that. I keep, I thought I turned it on. We, we're gonna have to have more rooftops. We're gonna have to have, um, uh, be more attractive to more building. That's why, to me, working with, with Dory Kelly, working with, about the airport, getting people to address these jewels that we have so that they want to come here to do things, or they wanna bring sales tax in, these are ways that we're gonna have to move forward.
So it sounds like you're interested in, in investing in economic development.
Never said I wasn't. I'm always interested in that, but I'm also interested in making sure that we provide for the business and the people that are here right now.
I think, I think it's inevitable that, I think the reality is, is that the, the tax burden on the citizens is going to be increased. I think the reality is, is that's going to have to be done. As I said last month, I can't do it in good conscience without proving to us as a council and to the citizens that we've gone through a process to make sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible. And that's why I'm asking for alternative budget proposals to be prepared so that we know what it would take to, uh, to at least feel comfortable that we're running as efficiently as we can. And, uh, I don't see the harm in having at least two different budget proposals in place now so that we evaluate if and what cuts could be made or efficiencies developed, uh, as we move into the inevitable process of having to increase the spending that's out there. I mean, this is, this is even scratching the surface of what, whatever this ten million dollar grant is out there for the Band-Aid for a wastewater treatment plant, which is gonna require a two million dollar match. I mean, where the heck are we gonna get that two million dollars? So, um, that's why I wanted to bring it back up.
Mitch, I, um, you know, hearing all this, we have to look everywhere. We have to look everywhere. I mean, I'm still new, but I realize we have to look everywhere for whatever cuts we can, we can make.
And.
Those cuts, there are ways to become more efficient.
Uh, become more efficient, yes, correct. Um, and I'm not talking salaries either. I agree with Brandon on that. But I don't see any reason why we can't look at each department a little closer and see what they may be able to get by without this year.
Okay.
And that is indeed part of the process of which we undertake after we get the values. If you send us on a, on a, I'm gonna call it a goose chase right now, when the values change, you know, seven to ten times before they're certified, you're wasting our time and yours and money. Cynthia, right?
Right now, they're going through a process of a new, a whole new system. They are learning a whole new system, and Cynthia didn't even have time to get her budget together because we have a whole new system, and the employees are here taking classes on a daily basis. And everybody's applying to learn the new system, to be more efficient, to apply to the things.
I'm gonna make it clear, it's not, I'm not saying it's not an option to look into that, but at this point in time, the timing doesn't make sense to, to.
Well, if the timing isn't now, then we're gonna end up with our backs to the wall.
No, you won't.
Decision and.
You just have to be more efficient with your time.
Yes, just, you need to look at all.
You need to explain that, how can I be more efficient with my?
I mean, we all, we, we have, we have five meetings. We're gonna have five budget meetings this year. And let's, you, you've got some, some tasks, we have tasks. I meet with my employees, um, starting now to figure out where are we now? Where do we wanna go? What projects and plans do you wanna see next year? What can we afford? Same thing is being done with, on the council level, like you did last year. Each of you identified the projects and plans that you wanted to see done after getting citizen input. So that's a process we're gonna do in July. In August, we try to finalize the numbers with the yellow sheets, and then hopefully by the September meeting, we'll all be on the same page.
But we all have homework to do.
I didn't ask for any projects, for the record.
I do have a public comment.
What?
A public comment? Yes.
We do.
Oh, please do.
Kristen.
Uh, all right, I didn't know I was gonna be doing comments after all this. So when I wrote this earlier, I didn't know what y'all were gonna say. So I'm gonna kinda try to finagle this. Um, so I don't know much, you guys, but I was super inspired at the last meeting when you talked about the two million dollars, what we needed. I did nothing because I didn't have a job and just wasn't sleeping. I spent nothing but the last several, uh, the last month thinking about that two million dollars. So, um, there was one thing that I found that I don't know, it may be helpful. What's that? Did you have a question for me? No. Um, so in both the March and the April meeting, there were instances in which our actual costs were less than what we budgeted. I think, Robert, you call them cost savings. So in March, waste management didn't raise the fee to five percent. So there was a twenty-three thousand dollars of, thirty, twenty-three thousand of taxpayer dollars that were allocated to that line item that we don't need anymore. And so there's twenty-three grand. And then in April, Councilmember Etheridge asked about the airport budget, and it was revealed that we were able to get some hangars. I think you said it was a hundred and forty thousand instead of three hundred and fifty thousand. So that's two hundred and ten thousand. So between those two things, that's almost a quarter million dollars. And I'd be willing to bet that there's more because that's just what I saw in the last, whatever, four or five months. So that's unspent money. And so I'm curious, the, the question I initially had was, in this process that you guys are gonna go through, the five meetings or whatever, is there a way to gather those cost savings that we've had through the year and reallocate that money? Because we're not spending it on whatever it is. And then, as a taxpayer, I'd obviously like to know where that money actually went. But the, the cost savings thing, I mean, it's just like any budget, you know? If I budget four hundred dollars for my utility and it comes in at three sixty, I've got whatever, forty bucks. Maybe I go take myself out to dinner. You guys can't do that, so it's gotta go to something else. So the point being, I feel like there's probably lot, lots of examples of those. So can we utilize that to put for the two million for the, the wastewater improvements? Or whatever the infrastructure thing? So. um, that was kind of all I had on that. So, thank you.
Uh, factual, I think I'll refer to Robert after this, but the hangar money point in fact, that came out of tax note. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
So coming out of tax note, it can only be spent on infrastru-, it's on. Uh, it, it can only be spent on infrastructure or certain things. If we get that reimbursed from, from anybody, it still has to go back into the tax note. Now, whether we can spend that tax money for improvement of the wastewater, maybe. But we'll have to see how it was allocated before and if we're going to reallocate.
Um, further statement of fact, in relation to the 23,000 for the waste management, um, there's ebb and flow in our lives. You know, people get sick, you have to spend money, you didn't count, you had to spend. Uh, our ebb and flow with that was two wastewater pumps that, that went out at, at a cost of what, 65,000?
Sixty.
Not budgeted. So, yeah, when we do these yellow sheets and, and the plus and minus is to whatever line item on the budget per department, you're going to see what it was spent on, what it wasn't, what surplus, uh, just what happened in that particular line item. There's 22 departments, each have about 80 line items. So we go through that, uh, every uh, budget work, not every budget workshop, the one budget workshop where we call it the yellow sheets, line item by line item, where people can comment. And before that, or as part of that, the, the staff will give a presentation as to what their plans and projects are and what their needs are. So yes, to that point, I just wanted to make that clear that, yeah, although we may have surplus, it doesn't mean it automatically goes back to the citizens because something else always comes up. But it's just a viable expense because you've got to have pumps to run the wastewater plant.
If I may ask a question of Cynthia, not related to the citizen comments, but I think it's germane to this discussion right now. Uh, when I was looking through the financials on the estimated fund balances, we're showing a, an overage of 337, 709 on the general fund. There's not a page number, I'm sorry. Does that sound familiar? And then below that on the utility fund, we're showing a 938,708 under. Is that accurate? I mean, that says we're running a half million dollar deficit.
Right till we get to the.
Yes.
Audit?
Typically it's, you're, you should really only look, when you're looking at the reserve balance, look at your general fund because it's kind of oddball when you look at the utility because, yeah, our cash, our expenditures and, you know, what we need to have is below, but in utility, you've got all the infrastructure and a lot of that, which is not shown in that. So it makes it hard when you're looking at that. Cause typically we only have to have the required fund balance in the utility, I mean, in the general fund. So today we're to the good in the utility fund, the, I mean, the general fund.
In the general, yeah.
And then the utilities, it's kind of, when you're looking at this, you're looking at your total expenditures and you're looking at what, what you have it, it.
Well, at this point.
Is seething kind of.
Well, this is my third year. At this point in time, I don't think I've seen a half million dollar deficit here before. If you're not worried about it, that's, that's.
Yeah. Well, and it's covered, but because you don't always have cash, you're, you're covered because your stuff is in infrastructure or something that is not readily available in, in cash form.
So, so you're comfortable with where we are in this balance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one question based off of Councilman Jenkins' comment. And I guess this is more for you is the capital expenditures that we're not spending, such as the, 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 the hangers and we're able to save that money. Does it have to be spent in the current budget or how far out can we take that money? And to further, further the capital expenditure?
Well, I just got a, again, statement of fact, the, the hangers was a really strange thing that came about. All right. So text dot and I'll uh, review, I thought I did this already, but I'll do it again. Uh, text dot aviation led us to believe, led me to believe that a B I L and I I J A funding would be available to purchase the hangers. So we budgeted, that was $375,000 for three hangers, you know, plus closing cost. So I, we budgeted 37.5, which is the 10%, 10% match. Okay? Cause text dot picks up the 90%. Four months after they told me it was okay and we set the motion in process and signing, uh, uh, earnest money contracts with the owners of the hangers. Text out aviation FAA said, nope, you can't use that money. Had our, since I already had contracts with these people, I used the tax note money to cover the cost of one of the hangers and ramp grant money to cover the cost of the other. So what actually happened was the monies that, you know, it, it costs us a lot more. I've since appealed to the FAA and text out aviation using Michael Cloud's office to say, no, you know, text out, you told them this, but you did that. And now we're going to get reimbursed for the monies that we've outlaid from the tax note to pay for the hangers, which eventually be revenue generating, as you know. So, um, we go to the commission next month, text dot commission, where they vote on giving us that money back. So there's a lot of things that happen ebb and flow, but the good news is we have the hangers and we're making revenue off of them now. Okay?
Absolutely. And, and I mean, that's, that's great. I mean.
It's very phenomenal.
Yeah. I, I guess my question is more just, I under, I understand that nuance, but are you allowed to take money from this fiscal year and, and save it for expenditures in future fiscal years?
We have in the, in the past, under a capital improvement plan, when I got, when I first came on, we had that. Uh, but necessarily you can't bank money year to year.
I mean, technically any overage you would have would go into reserves. So it, it's always there for you to use. So, I mean, it is.
Dedicated to a specific project.
Yeah. And if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the financial report and you say, okay, well, we didn't spend that expense in the airport to buy those hangers. If you go on the flip side and look at the revenue, that revenue isn't there either. So technically both of those line items are going away and it's a net because you don't have the expense, but you also don't have the revenue. So your revenue side is missing. So technically I don't have that 120,000 in savings on the airports to go spend somewhere else because I don't have the revenue either. So my revenue is lower, but my expenses are also lower, which offsets. So my total budget is a net effect, basically.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
To, to Counselor Dunham's question, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it though, we do have a time restriction. Excuse me, we're on a clock from, that's the 2023 tax note. So there is a finite amount of time that we have to spend that by, correct?
You have three years.
You have three years. So we're in the third year.
No, it'll be the third year next year, 2023, 24, 25, 26, yeah.
So it, it is time constrained.
Yes, sir. Spend, using the funds, you have, you know, three years to spend it.
Just, so for, for clarity, that's two more fiscal years. Or is it just one more fiscal year? Okay.
This and next year. Yeah.
All right, Mayor, if I, uh, may move forward with a motion. And this is going to be slightly modified from last month and with the intent of us being allowed to take a look at what it would, what steps would we need to be taken to, if we had to accomplish a 3% decrease in spending, and I apologize for the additional work. I, I don't think it's sending us on a wild goose chase. I think it's a prudent practice to go through. I would like to move that we direct the city manager to develop a multi-scenario approach to the budget proposal process that includes a 3% reduction in spending and a $150,000 investment to expand the Economic Development Department. And two, a no new revenue scenario that includes a $150,000 investment to expand the Economic Development Department.
I would just like to, to just, I guess, add a comment here if I'm, if I'm able.
Yeah.
My personal belief is this doesn't need to be a down to the penny.
Doesn't what? I'm sorry.
It doesn't need to be down to a penny. It doesn't need to be ultra-precise, uh, because I, I understand the numbers flex. Um, and also through an ERP integration, I, I fully understand the complexity and, and how fast this is moving. But I, I think that there's a lot of citizens that are curious and they just want to know what services would we have to get rid of in order to see that decrease? And I think there may be a realization that, you know, we don't want to live without those services and we're, we're okay with the budget the way it is, but I don't know that, that anyone really knows what that looks like at this point.
I, I tend to agree with what Brandon's saying. I, I think, I do think, um, that a closer look to enforce or support the fact that, that the efficiencies we think are there are truly there. And again, I don't think it has to be a real, a real deep dive, but I, I think it's worth exploring.
I didn't hear either one of you say you second.
Are you still asking for the 150,000 economic development?
Yes, ma'am. That was what I proposed.
I, I could support a half of that. I think that we, we talked about this two months ago and I, I said it here from the dais that Jill needs some help. We have economic development initiatives. We have a lot of stuff going on right now. But we need to have another person or at least a part-time person helping her and helping us um, pursue these in the manner in which they need to be pursued. Um, I feel that person could help us begin to, uh, uh, apply for the First Street program, which is a segue into the Main Street program, which would allow us to then apply for more grants. Um, and also we have this G S L, G S L I program that the city and the chamber purchased where in our second year, we have no one to access on that on a regular basis. So it truly will end up being a waste of money if we don't have someone helping us. Look at those prospective customers. Look at those prospective investors that might be interested in coming here. Um, opportunity Austin, it's a little more elusive. I don't know how much that's going to benefit us in the long run, but that person could help with those things as well. So I could, I could support that, Mitch.
Would you like me to amend the motion?
I need to add one, just word of advice. Um, I advise not to stipulate any expenditures dedicated at this point until we know what the numbers are. You don't know what's going to happen in the next two to three months, case in point. We have to do brush dump again and I, I have to use some tax note money to do that, but so we don't create another fire hazard. So I, I, I'm not opposed to any of this. I'm just opposed to the timing. But let's, let me present to you, let my staff and I present to you what the numbers are once we get them. And then we can take a look at all of this. That's all I'm.
Well, the process is to go through the exercise so that we know we're as efficient as we can be now. And, and that's the intent. So I wouldn't, I will modify that, uh, motion if that's what you're asking me for, Counselor.
I do have one question. And, and keep in mind, this is some ignorance of being new to the council, but from my understanding of the impact fees, this is going to be a long-term investment. But at the end of it, if we haven't acquired all the impact fees that we need, we're going to be on the hook for that if the development hasn't come.
We have to sell the impact fees now. If, if we put impact fees out there and don't bring the development, we won't collect the impact fees. And then yes, we would be on the hook for it.
But in reality, the impact fee process is going to take nine, six to nine months to do.
And then what's the, the amount of time that, I mean, do you, are we even allowed to talk about how much time we anticipate we have to, to recoup that impact fee from the new development?
That'll be depending upon how you structure your impact fee, uh, um, um, ordinance through, and, and Ryan Hinner and his group are going to help us do that. It could be 25 years, it could be 30. It, it just depends on what we end up.
Putting into the.
Putting in place.
Putting in place.
And I mean, as someone that will for sure be around at that point, um, I, I just, I would like to, to see that, that we're just being proactive. I mean, I wasn't thinking of it that way, Mitch, but I would like to be proactive in the, in the, ensuring that the impact fees are being collected by the city and, and that would incur that we need development. And, and I understand we're seeing some rumblings right now, but I mean, I've lived here my whole life and it's, or not my whole life, but a large portion of my life has been here and it's relatively the same. And so I just want to make sure that we're not banking a lot of things on hopes and dreams and that we're, we're being proactive and, and trying to get some, some, some development here.
Okay.
I can, I can tell you with 99.95% confidence that this budget has, will, will not be impacted by impact fees. We've got a lot of work to do between now and the time we adopt that.
Well, absolutely. I was just more talking about economic development, giving economic development.
The need for investment in economic.
Yeah, sorry. We're not connecting those dots here. I apologize.
No, no, that's, no, that.
And so, Robert, tell, tell us one more time, please. When do you expect to have these numbers that?
July 25th is the, is the date that the certified values have to be published. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going to sit on our laurels and not do anything. We'll start doing the, the, where we are now, where we need to go. What projects and plans do my staff and, and you guys need and want? So that's what we'll be working on until the time we get to the yellow sheets that happen in July. Probably the August meeting, my apologies. July, we'll be bringing, here's, here's, um, all the plans and projects that the staff want and you want. And then in August, we can actually, here's the yellow sheets, here's the puts and takes. Here's what we want to, uh, to target as improvements and our, our cost savings or whatever the case may be.
And then we've got three weeks to work through all of that.
You've got two more meetings that you would, you would, you would have to, you have the August meeting and the September meeting, and then the final adoption. There's two meetings that are actually in September. So you have three meetings. So, yeah, the last meeting is nothing. So you've got one and a half meetings to get it done.
But it's three weeks.
It's a month.
Okay. Jennifer, I'd like to, uh, amend that motion to direct the city manager to develop a multi-scenario approach to the budget proposal process that includes a 3% reduction in spending and a $75,000 investment to expand the economic development. And number two, a no new revenue scenario that includes a $75,000 investment to expand the Economic Development Department.
Why don't we push back that part of the different scenarios we're asking for and amend the motion for the economic development and the 3% right now?
I would again advise, I do not have numbers to work with at this point. You're going to be pushing us down something that's going to be for naught. Let us spend money and time working on the ERP, doing projects and plans, see where we are now. I, I just, I don't understand why I can't get that through to folks. It's too early to dedicate 75,000 now until you know exactly what money you have to play with. If you do it now, you're going to be stuck unless you make a motion to cancel that in the future. I'm just trying to make you see that light.
So can we just change the wording a little bit to, to not require that, that?
Folks are meeting on the 18th. Let, let me show you where we are. This is all I've ever asked since Councilman Jameson has brought this up. Let's get through the process and work through the process real time. If you send me down this and my staff, we are not going to be efficient. And you're all wanting efficiency. Cynthia, what do you have to add?
Well, you're asking for me to do cost savings and stuff. I can tell you, I don't get numbers for payroll benefits. I won't get that till July. I get the insurance numbers. That's a 200 and something thousand dollar bill typically every year. I won't know what that is for every department until they send that. I typically don't get that stuff till July. You want me to go give you a three-part thing. I don't know when you're asking for it, but give you different scenarios. You're having me base that on something that I'm going to have to estimate what payroll may be. I mean, maybe my insurance is going to go down. Maybe our insurance is going to go up. I can do a 1% or a 0% increase on payroll, but I'm going to be estimating a lot of numbers. What I come to you with in our first meeting is typically firm numbers on debt, insurance and on payroll. You're asking me to estimate now so that what I'm giving you now may not be what it's.
May not give Cynthia the respect. Can you give Cynthia the respect and listen to her? She's explaining her situation.
I mean, I can do it for you, but you, I want you to understand that if I'm going to have to do you two or three different scenarios and I'm doing it before I get all that information, it's going to be based on a lot of estimates that potentially could change. Because a lot of my numbers don't come in until July. We don't get the property tax till July. So I won't know where my revenue is going to be. Yes, I can go through and estimate a lot of the other stuff, but property tax is our big number. but property taxes are a big number. I don't know that till July. I can tell you payroll and insurance and a lot of that, I don't get till the end of July, first part of August. And I can tell you honestly, I haven't started yet with all the other stuff that I've been doing. I've barely been able to start getting my projects together and you want me to do three?
Two, I reduced it.
Two, okay, do two of them.
Do you start with a zero bus-based budget process or a no new revenue process?
Yeah, typically we, we take the five years of, of what the expenses and, and revenues have been. We have five years of data and we, we target, again, typically it's been three to five percent as opposed to last year. So yeah, we can, we can have an overall writing, well, target three percent, don't do five. But again, I don't know what that's going to be until all the numbers that Cynthia is talking about, until we have that in our hand.
I mean, I can give you the basic stuff, but I mean, your big numbers are your payroll and your insurance, which are your biggest hits a lot of times to your budget besides what Edward or some, some of them may want.
Well, if we assume a, a no new revenue, let's assume that we're going to just take the current year budget and have it again next year. Right? And then we went through the exercise of saying, okay, if this is the amount of money that we've got to spend, regardless of where the revenue projections come in yet, because I know that we're not sure. But if we go through the exercise now of saying, if this is the, the budget that we have to live with, this is not even thinking about other solutions that might generate more revenue, whatever solutions that we're going to present from either a tax note or a certificate of obligation or what other things that we're going to have to do to finance the must-need projects out there. If we go through the process of saying, what would it take to create a budget that's three percent less than what we spent last year? And we talk to the department heads and saying, where can you create those savings?
I think that's the June meeting.
And then while you're doing that, find seventy-five thousand dollars to invest in economic development because it's the only revenue stream that we can truly have a material impact on.
And that's the June eighteenth, and then we have one on July. I mean, that's the June eighteenth meeting.
Right. So we've got between now and when the revenue numbers come in in July to go through the exercise of simply finding three percent of the sixteen million not to spend. If it's not there, you come back and say it and you say, not only that, but Cynthia, you say, my department needs help. And then we go find that help by reallocating existing resources. That's the process.
Maybe perhaps, and, and I completely, I mean, I, I fully understand. And I, I understand that the ERP right now is super, super stressful. Uh, I mean, personal employment situations, I, I completely know what you're going through in, in that, that situation. And, and I know that the, the timing of this is, is crazy with, with everything going on. I just, from my perspective, I've heard a lot about people just having concern over the budget. They're just, and it's universal. I mean, all over the place. And so I guess maybe even differing from, from Councilman Jim, uh, Jameson over here. Y'all are going to be the same person.
You're blaming Jimmy for this motion?
Please, let's rephrase that, okay?
Back to Councilman Jameson over here, differing a little bit from him instead of, from my understanding, is, is what's been proposed is always an increase every year. And so maybe instead of doing multiple scenarios for potentially just coming in at a no net new revenue budget where it's just zero, giving you only one. And then we, I mean, some of the comments are made, I mean, some are, if we're desperately through, through our own project requests and stuff like that, we're realizing we can't get that into the budget. Do we come in and say, well, we have to do two percent or we do have to do one and a half? But I think that there is just so much curiosity and, and I'm not going to say it's a lack of transparency because I mean, the reports are very detailed. They're very accurate every year and I, I think that that's great. But I think there's some, some misunderstanding and some mysticism in the community of where things can, that should be able to be cut and they just see a massive number and they just get worried about it. And so I just wonder if there, there are ways that we can not burden you and your staff more than is necessary while also trying to open up and, and hear some of the concerns and, and understandings of, of what is needed.
One of the things I see that I, I think needs to happen is, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. They, they, they think there's a mysticism about what we're doing and how we're doing it. You know what? Not a whole lot of people come to these budget workshops. So I think it's on the council members' backs to go out and explain what's happening to, in them. We have to be upfront and out there talking to the people. Okay? What happens in here? If you're, if you're not coming to these budget meetings and then at the last budget meeting, when it's time to either, you know, we're, we're going to have to raise taxes or we're going to have to do this, everybody's screaming. Okay? Be involved. If you want to know what's going on, be involved. Talk to your councilmen. Talk to them. Reach out to them. If you're just, if you're, if they're not coming and then all of a sudden screaming, I want to know how many budget meetings you went to and why you don't understand where everything is coming from. Right now, I'm, I am not in favor of, of doing this, what we're talking about. Not until we get to at least through the first budget meeting. And if in, on the July council, if there's some sort of something that we want to talk about, we can talk about it then. I'm not, I think the, the July, July council meeting will be the time to address this after one budget workshop.
Yeah, and let's be realistic. The no new revenue rate doesn't really bring in a lot of money. Uh, it's the, it's the utilities, it's the general fund. And the way the values are looking, I mean, last year's values were four hundred and seventy-three a million dollars. This year's at four hundred and seventy-four. The average SF one home value dropped five point four percent. We did add, we had four hundred and sixty-four over sixty-five last year. That cost us a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That number's grown to five hundred people. It was five oh one, but someone passed. So the average savings to the over sixty-five is about two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and thirty-five dollars apiece. So we have to absorb that. That's revenue you're not going to receive. So again, the numbers, it's, it's kind of the worst I've seen in quite some time as far as, well, it's good for people paying taxes. And there's still two hundred and eighty some odd properties still under ARB review. So it could possibly go even lower. And when that happens, you know, the effective tax rate, no new revenue rate will follow. So.
I think that supports the point of needing the process to go through identifying as much savings as we can and to go through that process now.
There's a motion on the table. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to comment on, on Councilman Jenkins. I can get you right now. Um, but just, I think the comment, I, I mean, your comment is very valid and, and I think that, that is personally where I'm coming from is, is I have had people approach me and, and have had people ask for more information and for advocacy. And that's all I'm trying to communicate here. This isn't my own personal opinions. These are comments that, again, I've heard both sides where people are staunchly, we need to do, we need to, to expand the budget. We need to, to increase parks. We need to increase trails. We need to increase the services. And then we have another component of the community that is saying, we need to, to cut, cut, cut. And so he, I, all I'm doing is, is advocating really for both sides and, and making sure that, that both really the, the, the key players here are really able to understand and, and make decisions on the city budget. And if we're able to speak more about that, I think it, it gives them an opportunity to say, hey, you know, I, I really am not a fan of that being cut. I mean, we're not a fan of this being cut or maybe that particular thing I am. And I understand the budget workshops do that, but but having a little more exposure, I think is, is great.
I, I, I do think we need more exposure and I think it's, it's, it is on the council members to get out and talk to the community. Uh, as I say, during the election, I walked and talked to everyone I could and knocked on every door. And as I said, they want their city services. This is what they want. They do not want to lose what they've got. There are some that says, I can't pay my bills. As, as I've said, we have to find a way to support them in the same way. But I don't think that going here, saying no new revenue, looking at this again and looking at it like we're doing it right now, I think this is, is going to be making up some numbers that are unsupported. And then all of a sudden, people are going to see all of this and they're going to say, well, you said this back in, in June and July. Why can't you do this? We said back then, this is a scenario we're going at. I would rather that we had real live data to look at so we can move forward with what we need to move forward with.
So once again, we have a motion.
Excuse me, ma'am. I want to support your motion in part. I do. I, 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 I'm ready to commit something to economic development. I truly am. But if Robert has just said he's willing to do this, when we can push it down a little bit further, I, I think maybe we do need to, we're, we don't want to duplicate efforts here or duplicate work. And I'm, I'm support this when the timing's right, but I think we need to wait just a bit longer on, on this, these other parts of your motion in terms of looking at different scenarios until we have next month, right?
Next month.
So are you asking to offer an alternative motion?
No, not.
No. Okay. So we have a motion on the table. At this time, I have no second motion dies. Next item on the agenda, discussion and action on approval of financial report. All right, Cynthia, you're up.
Okay. As of this morning, you received the financial report. Thank you. We've had time to look it over. Currently, our revenues are overall right, we're kind of where they're supposed to be, sixty-seven percent when you look at general and utility together. Again, if you separate them out, general fund looks really good, utility fund, not so much. Um, utili, uh, general fund will, revenues will continue to go down as the expenses incur since we've collected most of the revenues. And I foresee the, uh, utility to kind of be the opposite. We'll be collecting more of our electric and water revenue during these summer months. So I'm hoping to see that four hundred and sixty go the other direction. I don't know if y'all had any specific questions about the report or anything?
No, that was my, my biggest concern. The, the only thing that I saw and just kind of just trying to, to, to gain more understanding is they all seemed to, generally speaking, the budget seems to be not keeping in pace with revenue and expenses from last year. But at the same time, we still seem to be in a good position to the benchmark for where we should be for eight months out of twelve. Is there really any understanding of why we're below but above average at the same time?
I think if you're just comparing, it's just the
Timing.
Ti- timing of the two different years and the different things in, in some of the line items and, and not. I don't. I mean, to me, it's, you know, like I said, it's, you know, we, we seem to be on the right track. I don't foresee, general fund, like I said, is kind of where I expect it to be. I was kind of hoping the electric revenue would be actually a little bit higher. And again, I can tell you too, this report has probably not got everything entered, a lot of the stuff just because we were working this week and I came in on Saturday to do this and there's several items that are not in here that are May items that didn't get put in. So this is not one hundred percent what May really looks like. Just due to that, I wanted to get some kind of report out to show. But like I said, general fund definitely looks okay. I'm not, you know, I'm hoping the utility will kind of, you know, turn back around. I think the next billing will kind of help us see where, if we're on the right track to maintain.
But I'm, how much work would it be to, prior to the next meeting, maybe the next city council, uh, regular scheduled city council meeting, to put an amended May budget once you know for sure the numbers are in or?
You mean, put in the actual expenses?
Yeah, just knowing the, because of the ERP migration that things.
Yeah, and things are, I mean, usually when I give you a report, things are constantly changing anyway because what I did on Friday is not what she did today. I'm just saying, there's a lot more, a lot of invoices that did not get input. I tried my best to get all the revenue side in. So what I was worried, you know, maybe some of the expenses weren't in because a lot of the invoices, we went through and made sure that all the big invoices, the waste management, the LCRA, all that was in because I didn't want it to make it look really strange. So not having that in there. I mean, I can run an, another one, but I mean.
The June budget would probably.
It, it's, yeah, it's, what's going to make it look funny is then you're going to see a bunch of stuff that is June, but I'm not going to have the revenue in because the revenue doesn't come in until they get the billing. So it's going to make it look lopsided the other way. So.
I think that's fine.
Any other question? Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the financial report as it stands.
I second that emotion.
Motion is made in second. All in favor. One, two, it's approved. Okay. Thank you, Cynthia. Okay, I found my piece of paper here. We're going to go, I'm sorry, what? Oh, we're going into a closed, I'm closing the open meeting and going into a closed meeting. State, and I'm stating the reason is the city council will hold an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one government code, Vernon's Texas code annotated in accordance with the authority contained in section five-five-one oh seven-four to discuss our personnel quarterly evaluation of our city manager. So at this time, we're going to close session and it is, I don't know what time it is, seven fifty-five. Thank, hope you all hang out with us.
No decision made.
But they vanished, didn't they? It's not like that doesn't mean it's safe.
Especially does not sleep.
We went to closed session. We're back into the open meeting. The time is, I don't know, eight thirty nine. As a result of the executive session, no action taken. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, and one announcement. We changed the budget, July budget to July twenty third. And we'll put that out on the website.
No decision made.
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 No decision made.